Good evening and welcome to the Brockton School Committee Finance Subcommittee Meeting. Today is Monday, November 25th, 6:00 PM. We are located at the Dr. William Arnold School on 135 Belmont Street here in Brockton. And I'll call this meeting to order, and we will establish a quorum. Mr. Vega.
Here.
Mr. Gomes.
Here.
Ms. Oliver.
Yeah.
Ms. Azak.
Here.
Superintendent Tilly Anis present, myself, Tony Roger, as the Vice Chair, is present. Typically, we don't have hearing of visitors in our Subcommittee, but we do have two individuals that requested to speak, but I will open that up to the floor if it's all right with the members by hand vote, if you guys want to hear any hearing of visitors this evening. Being that is unanimous, first, I will call Mr. Michael Silva. Mr. Silva, you can approach the podium. Just give your full name and address, and you have three minutes to look to this. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. How are you? Michael Silva, I'm a resident of Easton. Twelve years business as a vendor here in Brockton. A lot of things have been going on, a lot of non-payment, and we're trying to figure out what's going on. And I'm speaking for probably 250 vendors. It's been a while since people have gotten paid, and they're going broke, or they're borrowing, and I'm just trying to find out the answers of what's going on. I understand with a lot of help from all of yous over the last week that we are getting a check tomorrow, and it's good. It's a partial check, which is fine. It's gonna get me out of the hole, because I was $2 short of being out of business, and I've been in this business 12 years and never, ever have gone through this. Always got a check once, twice a month. For vendors, I don't know whether or not you guys think that, or not you guys, but people in the higher-ups think that we just collect a check and we don't have things to pay for. We got insurance bills, fuel bill, unemployment bill, workman's comp, everything that the city asks for, we have. We can't live off of a partial check once every five weeks. It's impossible. So, going forward, I just want to know whether or not we're gonna be on the same cycle as we used to be. I understand the prior administration, I don't know what happened, but I do know what happened, but I'm not gonna talk about it. It was good. That's why we were getting paid a couple times a month. I just don't want to be out of business, because I enjoy working for the City of Brockton. Joyce will vouch for me. I've done plenty of holiday parties with the former mayor, Billy Carpenter, and it was, I enjoyed it. I enjoyed doing the coat drives with Joyce, but I can't do them anymore, because there's no money. I can't even donate any money to the city anymore, because I'm going broke. So, I just want to know, going forward, how's the cycle gonna be? Are we gonna have this delay again in January? Or are we gonna be consistent now? And I appreciate all you guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Joseph F. Scrivney.
Scriven.
Scriven, Scriven, my apologies. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, everyone.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
All right. Can you hear me now? Okay. All right. So, I'm Joe Scriven. I have run a courier service for, I'm in my 49th year. I started when I was in high school, and we've been doing work for the city now for 21-plus years. We provide all the mail between the different departments and the city and all this, and everything has been working fine. As was mentioned, problems happened back last year, and still, things were moving smoothly, it looked like. And so, I started in February, talking to see what was gonna happen with the bid, which would be coming up at the end of the year, and nobody could really give me answers. They were working on the budget. They told me that I shouldn't have anything to worry about. And so, I kept, when it got to be May, I called in and I asked to speak with Trish, who was the financial girl at that point in time. She told me that, you know, what we did was very important, that they would make sure they worked everything out, even though they weren't ready to do bids or anything, because my contract was gonna be up at the end of last fiscal year, or this fiscal year, I should say. So, at that point, I said, "Well, can we at least do a, you know, one year or something to keep us going?", because we didn't want to be outside of our contract. And they told me they would work with the superintendent, who, I don't know if he's still there, but, you know, she went to him. I never got to speak to him directly, but she was working to try and get an interim contract done. But yet, it never got done, and so, when it got to be at the end of June, I said, "What are we gonna do?". And so, they said that, you know, "We will work it out, but in the meantime, what you do is very important. We guarantee you, everything will be fine. You'll get your checks, and when it finally, everybody's position is filled, then we'll be able to take care of this." And so, that seemed like it was fine. The first three months of this current fiscal year, I was paid, and then, when it got to be in the October billing, Irene told us that she couldn't send the payment, because she didn't have a contract. So, in the interim, I know that people are working on it and everything else, but, and I've just been kinda like stonewalled, and so, you know, we've tried really hard to do a good job for everybody, and so, that's my concern, and it was nice to talk to you on the phone last week, but this is the first chance to say hi to you. But, that's my concern, is just, I've gotta get paid. I'm a small company, and same thing as the other gentleman, so, that's what we're hoping for, so, okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And we will move on to our agenda. Just for housekeeping purposes, please, for the record, Ward 5 Representative, Mrs. Sullivan; Ward 7 Representative, Mr. Sullivan, are absent from this meeting. Moving forward, we will hand this over to the Superintendent, where we'll be talking about the DUCI mandate, vendor transportation invoices, and central service vendor invoices and issues. So, the floor is the Superintendent. Where's she? Give us the presentation, and I will get out of the way.
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us here for this meeting to discuss our unpaid bills and invoices. I know we had a meeting just last Tuesday, and we called this meeting at the end of last week, but I thought it was important to address this as quickly as possible, because it obviously has significant ramifications for the school department. So, last Wednesday, it came to my attention that many of our vendors, including but not limited to those who privately transport our students for special education, have not been paid thus far this school year. Since then, I've received a litany of emails, phone calls, and visits from our longtime vendors and partners who are pleading to be paid. I want to start out by apologizing to these vendors who are in the audience, who are watching tonight. This is not how we should be doing business, and I want it to be very clear that we have been and are continuing to do everything we can on the school department's side in order to fix the issue. That being said, I also want to be open and honest with the committee and the community about how we got here. Did I turn it on? No, I didn't. Okay. So, I've been here four months, and I was well aware when I was hired that the budget and financial processes were going to be, or needed to be, one of my first and main priorities. I knew coming in that these processes weren't done appropriately in the past by the school department, and that it would be my job to fix it. Now, I'll be honest, I learned quickly that the system is much more broken than I even anticipated, and the school department really does have a lot of work to do in order to clean everything up. Even some of the most fundamental processes, like the school committee reviewing warrants, do not exist, and it is going to take us some time to build the systems and get us to where we need to be. So, I wanted to start by revisiting this slide. It was one of two that I presented a few meetings ago to address one of the recommendations from the investigation, which was to bridge the artificial divide between the city and the school department. During that meeting, I presented some of the challenges we have been facing in bridging this gap, and so, I wanted to actually, during that meeting, I just kind of put this up on the slide deck. I talked about it very generally, but today, I'd like to actually drill down into each of these challenges. So, I will say for the first one, the challenge is that meetings are collaborative, but they need decision points. So, I will say that we meet with the city very frequently, at least twice per week, but often more than that. Here, you will see that one of my first concerns was regarding the number of meetings that we have, where we leave without true progress being made or decision points. The reason I highlight this tonight is because, as I stated, there is much to be done to fix what has been a broken system for many years, and yet, I don't see that we're moving quickly enough as a collective to solve these issues. We have solutions that have actually been provided to us by our outside consultant, Open Architects, some of which I'll present tonight, that have been presented for weeks upon weeks that remain undone. So, again, while I've only been here four months, I do not think that even in that four months, we've made the progress that I would have anticipated we should have made in that time. And also, just to speak to that point, we do have multiple meetings a week, and Wednesday was the first time that I found out that we hadn't been paying our vendors, and I found that out from our vendors. And so, to the point about collaboration and transparency, which are words that I keep hearing, I believe that that demonstrates the exact opposite of those two things. I think that being collaborative and transparent means that at one of these many meetings, I would have found out that we had put a stop to all payments. What I did know is that invoices were being returned to us, because they were not up to par, that we were trying to put in system to get them back up, to return them. We knew that we had contracts to do, and I'll get back to that, but it was never told to me that we had just stopped paying. The second challenge listed here is that we, one of the places where I feel like we do see overnight changes sometimes is in the processes and practices being asked for by City Hall. So, for example, a few weeks ago, the city auditor sent a memo with a number of new requirements that BPS needed to follow, that were new, that we did not know about, including, for example, sending VIS reports attached to all invoices. So, I won't get into the weeds on what a VIS report is, or why it was being called for. All I will say is that anyone who runs an organization, or is part of an organization, a large one especially, knows that it takes time to implement new processes. There needs to be communication, for one, with all levels of the organization. There needs to be training, and this specific report would have required training for our administrative assistants, which would have also required negotiations with our bargaining unit. So, change happens incrementally, and whereas, and BPS did object to the fact that we believe that we are being asked to implement some of these changes overnight, and you'll hear me talk about this more tonight, that the goalpost seems to move for us. And I want to be clear, too, that what, there are a lot of things that the school department has not been doing that are required by law and by statute, but many of the other things that we are being asked to do are a matter of preference or additional checks and balances, which I'm not saying that we don't need. We absolutely need them. However, when we don't even have the foundational elements to be able to then add the frills, is that much more difficult. So, again, I don't believe that these additional checks and balances, I believe that they are, they're great, they're, they do make good sense, but they're not typical practice anywhere besides here, and again, they're gonna take that much more time to implement because of that. And to get to the final challenge on this slide, which is the crux of our issue regarding unpaid invoices this evening, is in the spring, also previously stated, the city solicitor implemented a new multi-page contract for all purchases over $10,000, even for vendors on state contract. So, last year, just to give you a gauge of what that looks like, BPS placed approximately 1,300 orders over $10,000, with over 351 vendors. So, that would require 351 potentially contracts. Again, it depends on the range of price we're looking at. So, now, we're in the process of slowly converting these orders to contracts, but again, this will take time, and that was what we were in the process of doing as we thought, incrementally as we thought the bills were being paid. These contracts do include provisions that have been established by the City of Brockton, but again, are not necessarily typical throughout the state, which is also then leading vendors to question the process, and then consult their own legal teams before agreeing, which makes good sense, right? This is a contract, we've never seen something like this before, we work with many districts, we need our legal team to look at this. So, but again, this causes a significant lag in paperwork and processing, and the true issue lies in the fact that, again, services have already begun when we're asking for this paperwork, because we were using the paperwork and the processes that were previously utilized here in Brockton. So, we start the school year using the processes we've always used, not necessarily adhering to the new ones we're supposed to be adhering to, which I agree we should adhere to, but services can't stop. You know, school is starting. So, it was a necessary decision in order for services to continue, as we transitioned over to the new process and better practices that are established by the city. But again, however, it has now come to our attention that those invoices have also not been paid. This includes a variety of goods and services, including two, but not limited to, our Title I services to surrounding private schools, which I found out, because those private schools reached out, special education tuition to our out-of-district placement schools, special education services, and then, everything from like copier maintenance to food that is being ordered by Cisco to provide food for our culinary arts classes, and then, services that are actually legally mandated by DUCI. So, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at from this contract, so, this is the City of Brockton, this is the new boilerplate contract that we are required to implement. Now, it's mostly filled out, there are places, and they provided us a template, and so, even though they provided a template, and they're like, "Oh, it's simple, just fill it in". For me, I'll be honest, I'm not a lawyer, it was not so simple, but I, you know, I did my best, and the team did their best filling in these contracts. We did have some support from the city solicitor's office. So, we fill in this first contract, so it's a couple pages long, and so, again, just to show you that this is what a vendor is receiving, that then, they might need to run by their legal department, right? It's a significant enough contract where they're gonna want to do their own checks and balances, which is understood. Then, they need to return the appendices to us. So, this is the appendices, so there's A, B, C, D, and E, that they are required to fill out and then return to us. So, this is a process that needs to be followed, and this is the process that we have to follow from here on out. Actually, I will come back to the purchase orders thing, but I want to show you what this actually ends up looking like in practice. So, just for my own, one exercise for me, for one vendor, so, I, we, as you all know, we wanted a transportation audit. So, by the time I got here, the first email that I received, or one of the first emails, was from the city solicitor on July 29th with the TAS proposal. I had my first email exchange with them on August 1st, my first phone call with them on August 5th. They, on August 12th, even though we don't have a contract, purchase order, nothing, they went ahead and sent me a spreadsheet and a list of documents they're gonna need, interviews. On the 19th, they went ahead and sent us a schedule of interviews. On the 22nd, I told them, "Hey, hey, hey, please hold off, we haven't like even done the purchase order, I know there's a contract that needs to be done". That being said, I also know that the school committee wanted this, and as did the city, you know, quickly. So, on the back end, we are trying to get all of the processes done. Then, the procurement office at the city level asks for three quotes on August 26th. Now, obviously, I wasn't here for that, and so, I, you know, had to reach out between August 26th and August 29th to those who had been here, to be like, "Where, does anybody have quotes? Where are the quotes? We need to give them the quotes at the procurement office to show that TAS is the one we're working with". Again, this is something I kind of thought had already been done and agreed to by the time I got here, but that's fine. So, we're at the end of August, end of August, TAS is, you know, conducting interviews, they've agreed to go ahead and start services, which they really shouldn't have done, but I checked with Open Architects, and they were like, "Well, it's a vendor beware situation. If they want to start and start the work, knowing that they don't have a contract and knowing that they may not get paid, you know, that, you know, that's up to them". So, they did conduct the interviews as I'm trying to get quotes, and then, I'll send September 11th, because we thought the quotes were enough. Apparently, there's a Brockton 30B form that must be completed to accompany the quotes. Again, I'm new here, I'm figuring this all out, so, okay, so, we fill out the form. I just want to let you know, this is 15 internal emails going back and forth about, "Where are the quotes? Who is the form? Who fills out the form?". On September 19th, because again, I'm having trouble with the contract, the city solicitor was kind enough to help me complete the contract, and then, I sent the appendices to TAS to be completed. So, that's on September 19th. Then, on October 1st, because again, vendors, they also have a lot going on, they have things they need to do, so, I follow up again on October 1st, because I haven't gotten the appendices back. Still haven't gotten it back yet, so I follow up again on the 8th, that's when they send back the appendices. And again, this is just the typical process, I'm not blaming TAS. It takes vendors some time, they've got a lot of jobs that they're doing to turn things around. This is just to demonstrate what operations look like. Then, on October 22nd, we, I follow up with the city, or our CFO followed up with the city solicitor to see if the contract had been signed, because now, we have the contracts, we sent the contracts, we sent the appendices, so now, has it been signed by the mayor? Because that's the other thing, it needs to be signed by the mayor, because it's over 10,000. On October 24th, we found out that the routing still needed to be completed, so that's another process that needs to be done. That is an internal process in City Hall to ensure that all of the different people have checked it, so the city procurement, city auditor, city solicitor. I did not have access to that form, because we're not on Google Suite, so I'm trying to access that form, can't access that form, what do I do? I create a Brockton Gmail account to try to access the form, it gets denied. On October 25th, finally, on, they do the routing form for me, so, I appreciated that help by the city. October 28th, I follow up by email to see if the routing has then been complete, now that it was done internally by City Hall, and if the mayor had signed the contract, and on October 29th, this mayor signs the contract. November 14th, so just a few weeks ago, the invoices are submitted, resubmitted, because we had resubmitted them for payment, and then, payment was issued last week. So, I bring all this up to say that we are currently waiting for the revision of the TAS contract, or the TAS audit, and had we waited for this full process to ensue and done the work when we should have done it, we would not be receiving a draft of this contract until after October 29th. Actually, not, let me take that back. October 29th is when we would have started our interviews internally, where we would have started, you know, TAS was willing to go ahead and do it before this had all been done, but if it had been done in the appropriate manner, the contract should have been executed first before TAS started their work, which means that it would be another couple months before we got our audit. So, again, I just wanted to show kind of like, day in the life of what does this look like for just one contract, and again, we have 351 vendors, and this is just one. So, we are trying our best to implement processes. You know, we do have a Director of Strategy and Compliance who started with us recently. She actually went ahead and put together a manual tracking of documents, just to make sure that we are getting, because these are all the documents that are required, because we also are required to get certificate of insurance, where, you know, sometimes you need a sole source letter, there are a lot of different steps and a lot of different documents that are required. Unfortunately, because of the amount of orders that we take in, because of the amount of vendors that we work with, even since she started, which is, I don't know, like two, three weeks ago, she's already revamped this process, to now, we are leveraging our own technology, our own internal systems. So, again, we are trying to comply with what the city is, you know, requiring, and what, honestly, is what other places have been doing for a long time that we should have been doing, but we weren't. So, now, we have a form, and we're gonna be training the department heads on, "Here's the procurement, here's what you have to do", and every time you answer one of these questions, it kind of pops up with a, "Okay, if you're doing $10,000 to $99,999, then you need three quotes. If you're doing this, you need X", and so, the form itself is conditional, so that it can support our department heads to work through these processes. But again, this is gonna take communication, and it's gonna take training from our Director of Strategy and Compliance in order to get through all of the procurements and contracting that we need in order to get through the school year. Problem is, we're in November, school year has started, services have started, and bills aren't getting paid. So, here's just, again, an example, like, "I'll submit three quotes", and then, there's forms to do that. So, here's our open purchase orders right now, and we did reach out to City Hall to get a sense of which ones of these have been paid. Right now, just our open purchase orders totals over $9 million. That doesn't mean they haven't all been paid, but the problem is, is that we can't tell what has been paid unless we go in specifically and check immunities, which we have been doing. So, for example, today, we were able to drill down and confirm that special ed tuition had not been paid, but in order to find out some of these other things, we would have to, again, go into each. So, we did ask City Hall on Friday, we followed up with an email on Saturday about, "Can we at least get a list of what has been paid and what hasn't been paid?". And so, you'll see everything up here, we've got security, we've got utilities, we've got, you know, like, there's a lot of different items on here, and so, while we're very happy that we have been able to, we believe that checks will be cut tomorrow for our private transportation, there are still a lot of things up here that are not transportation, and we have a lot of things that are systematically and slowly stopping. Services that are stopping, vendors that have put holds on our accounts, and things that are, like, services for our schools are coming to a screeching halt. So, you know, I do just want to, you know, talk about the fact that, you know, I received an email today from the city about progress that has been made, or lack thereof, and I just want to say that, you know, what I said to them, which is, you know, "I've been here four months, I am doing the absolute best that I can, not a miracle worker, this is clearly a mess that has been made over multiple years, and I'm not gonna be able to clean it up in four months. In fact, it's gonna take probably the full year, if not more". But I did just want to, for that purpose, here are the solutions that we've implemented even in the past year, even some, many of these before I arrived, that were actually presented to the state at our most recent meeting, and so, I did just want to, like, go back and kind of revisit the fact that progress is being made, it is incremental, it's not, it's not as fast as any of us would like it to be, but we are making progress. However, I think a true impediment to progress is certainly when we are not paying our bills, because at this point, we're trying to build the ship, or build the plane as we fly it, but at this point, we're like grounding the plane, and it's almost like we're saying game over. So, some of the supports that we need from the city is to pay all outstanding bills, not just the ones from last week. We need to pay our bills, period. It is going to take us a long time to fix this and to clean this all up, and I'm very dedicated to doing so. I know my team is dedicated to doing so. Again, nobody is saying that things have been done the way they should be, and nobody is saying that we want to continue business as usual. We do not. We need to meet the state requirements, we need to meet the additional city requirements. We are willing to do that, but it is going to take us time, and in the meantime, we need to pay our bills. We cannot stop paying our bills for the reasons you heard just now, but then also for the fact that soon, and we're starting to see it, there is a trickle-down effect that is going to reach our students and our staff very soon. Also, as we asked for on Friday, to provide a list of all payments that have been withheld, because we, at this point, can, it's, unless we go in through every single order that's been put in, we can't tell which ones have and which ones haven't. Maybe, you know, they all have not been processed, we can't even tell at this point, because the ones we've gone into haven't been, but I'm hoping that there are some in there that have been. I imagine, since the lights are still on, there are some that have been, I don't know. Number three is to communicate before stopping any future payments. You know, we just need to know. You know, again, we will work as hard as we can to get things done as quickly as we can, but to not tell us that we were not paying our vendors was particularly upsetting to me as a new superintendent coming in, and yes, this is a reflection of my administration, but based on what I've seen before and the processes and protocols that were done before, those things are not acceptable anymore, and they were acceptable just a few months ago, and so, to change it overnight, we can't do that. And item number four is to support a reasonable implementation plan based on prioritization. So, you know, the city talks about 324, they talk about merging finances, they tell me, "Prea, provide an implementation plan". I'm happy to do all of these things. However, what Chapter 324 says to me is merging and working together, and the thing that I keep hearing is collaboration, transparency. Like, I would love- Like I would love help with prioritizing. I would love help with creating that implementation plan. But I feel like every time something is fix, like broken, which it's all broken, it's pre a you fix it. Pre you fix it now, now give us a new plan to fix it. And again, there's only so much we can do. And then five, there are solutions that we have proposed and that our, our consultant has proposed that we need to start implementing. So for example, updating our, the terms of our purchase orders. So we are required by the city to do these contracts that are above $10,000, even for those who are on state contract. Now, there is a way, and we have provided this, so I'll go back. So our, our consultant who worked with the city of Springfield, provided us with these terms and conditions a while back that are on the back of the purchase order in Springfield. On the left, you'll see the ones from the city of Brockton. So you'll see that the ones in Springfield, they're much more robust. And if you look at the contract that's been provided to us by the city, the terms and conditions that are on there, many of them cover what's in the contract, the boilerplate contract that the city wants. So if we were to revise the back of our PO, like they have in other municipalities, we would not necessarily need this appendices, this contract. And we've simply asked, not to go away from the contract for everybody, but can we at least just do this for those who are already on state contract? Because that would at least, again, we need help prioritizing and implementing. If you're saying, no, we just have to do this very long, arduous process for every single vendor. Doesn't matter if they're on state contract, doesn't matter what the threshold is. That's not help prior, help, helping us prioritize or helping us increase efficiencies. So this was something that was provided by our consultant several weeks ago. We did hear from the city solicitor that it does look good. It does look like something that they can implement, but that it might take until January till, or June. Now I'll be honest, I don't know what it takes in order to do this. I don't know if it takes a city council vote. I don't know what goes into that. But what I can say is if changing the left-hand side document to the right-hand side document is going to take a matter of months, then I would at least ask that we are given a matter of months to execute over 350 contracts. And that brings me to the end of my presentation.
Thank you for that presentation. I will now open up for questions to any of the members. And I'm pretty sure everybody has a question. Ms. Azak, followed by Ms. Oliver, then Mr. Vega.
Thank you, Dr. Tahilianni. That was definitely an eye opener. I know I've received many calls from vendors wondering why they're not getting paid. This is quite the process that we have to go through. So thank you for your transparency and the first, the frustration's there. It's there. So we do have to pay our vendors. They're providing a service and the only ones that are going to be suffering are our students if we do not have transportation for them. And again, they're providing a service. So we just need to get our contracts in order, but it's not going to be an overnight fix. It, it takes time. And like you said, we have over 351 contracts that we need to go through. And that, those are pretty detailed contracts. And I'm sure a lot of the vendors are going to want to have their attorneys look at them before they sign anything. So, but I just wanted to say thank you for the transparency. I'm going to just give some of my colleagues a chance to ask some questions. And I'm sure I'm going to ask more questions in a bit. Thank you.
A really good presentation. It's a really eye opening too. And I think it's embarrassing that you were the last to be made aware that the vendors are not getting paid. We have so many students out there that need the service. They need the ride to school back and forth. I know a few weeks ago, I did make a, you know, statement about this. How is going to jeopardize families when they cannot, there's no vendors to take their kids to school? And what are we going to tell those parents? You're going to stay home and you're going to have to watch your kids or figure out how you're going to take those kids to school back and forth. It's embarrassing what's being done to us. There's a lot of hinder to your ability to do your job and you have the ability and the knowledge, intelligence to do your job. And I'm just, I'm sad. It's, it's really heartbreaking at that we're trying and we're trying to work with City Hall and you're giving them everything and you're providing them what they're asking you, but they do want a miracle. They want a Christmas miracle and it doesn't happen overnight. They do have to stop what they're doing, which is hindering your ability to do your job and work with us. But the, the bills got to get paid. We do not want lights to be closed, other than that the kids cannot come to school at all. And we need to figure out how we can, I'll have more comments later, but yeah, we definitely have to work and get those bills paid all year.
Thank you. Mr. Vega?
First, I want to thank you for the presentation. I think it's important for folks in Brockton to have a clearer sense of the process. I mean, I think the committee, you know, we, we find ourselves under understandable scrutiny, right? We just had a major deficit, kind of implosion, right? A lot of folks were involved in that, the committee, but also other entities in the city, right? So it's, it's completely logical to me that folks would want to implement systems that would help tighten, bring the reins in on, on spending. Appreciate that. But I, I think back to a couple of weeks ago where we had Pastor Mike Gilbert here. Pastor Mike is, aside from being a pastor, is also a small business owner. He runs a transportation company here in Brockton. He also works with New Heights Charter School. And we were previously colleagues until he moved on to focus on, on, on his transportation service. I say all I can say, I, I had the opportunity to meet with him last week. We just kind of bumped into each other and he turned to me and said, it's happening all over again. And when I asked him what he meant, he said, well, I feel like I'm going to need to come back to the mic and beg to get paid for services I've rendered. Now, the last time we had this conversation, the mayor was here and the mayor made it a point to say, we can't have Pastor Mike not paying his guys. Pastor Mike is not paying his guys. And we have to come through on, on what we're, I'm embarrassed. It's difficult to look at some of the faces of people who are here. Because while the hindrance may not lie with us, the bill does. So, 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 so I have a couple of questions based on that. When we think about like these, these delayed payments, are they payments for services that have already been budgeted for?
Yes.
So, 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 so as we've started our budget cycle, we're asking for payment not on unexpected costs, but costs that are in the budget and were approved by city council. Can you do some definition for me? What is a Title I service?
So Title I services, those are entitlement services for students who, so, so actually a lot of times it's covered under a grant. So Title I services are for students who fall under a specific socioeconomic status.
All right. So it's fair to say some of the most challenged
Correct.
of within our student body. By law, are we required to provide services to Title I?
Absolutely.
Okay. What are the risks to our students and families if continued non-payment were to happen to vendors who support Title I services?
Well, I think, and for, that's a great point because for a lot of these services, right now vendors are continuing to do things out of the goodness of their heart, which I really appreciate. But at some point that, you know, that is going to run out. And when services stop, then we will have to do what y'all have had to do for other services that have stopped in the past or that y'all haven't been able to provide in the past, which is potentially, you know, compensatory services. Or there could be not specifically for Title I, but for the special education services, which we are also, which there are also payments that have not been paid. So it, again, it depends on the kind of services is where it's outlined. If it's in the IEP, if it's, you know, but I think your point is a good one because too, if they are part of our DESI entitlement grants, I don't know what the ramifications would be if we're not providing like from, I imagine that would be a ramification from DESI. Now, it, one of the things that you guys or some of the things that you also have in front of you is there was a memo that I sent to DESI per their request because they've asked to meet with us monthly, the school department. So, and they, they also meet with our consultant as well with just outlining some of the challenges that we were dealing with. Today, I sent them another memo, which you'll see because one of the things that I said in the first memo was actually not true. Because my understanding at that point was that I say, I say in one, special education transportation invoices were being returned due to a city council ordinance requiring us to put the transportation services out to bid. However, the city has agreed to cover those costs, these costs moving forward with the understanding that we will initiate the bidding process for these services midway through the school year. However, I felt I needed to let DESI know that actually that is not true. I don't want to say we're paying something when we're not. So I did send a correction today along with a notification that yes, it's not just the transportation that we are not paying for. It is other services. And I do call out that it's Title I services to surrounding private schools, special education tuition and services. Because, and I do ask for their direct support and intervention because to your point, these are entitlement services required by law. So I don't know exactly what is the ramification of us not providing it because everybody provides it. So I, I don't know what that looks like, but I do imagine that DESI would, that, that there would be some consequence for that.
And among the consequences, could families take legal action against the city?
Yes. Absolutely.
I'm imagining that those legal fees are not part of our budget.
No.
Okay. And I think, my last question, could you help us understand a little bit more what a state contracted service is and why, if at all, it might be odd to place additional requirements upon state contracted entities?
Yes. So those who are on state contract are the, are the vendors who have already been vetted by the state. So they've already, you know, provided their certificates of insurance. They've gone through a very rigorous process in order to have the state say, okay, these vendors are okay. So that school departments can actually just purchase right from those vendors with minimal hoops to jump through. Because, you know, procurement is, is difficult, right? It does take multiple steps. So it's always prefer, preferred to buy off state contract because the hoops that you have to jump through are much less. And we try to do as much purchasing off state contract as we can. And I mean, state contracts cover pretty much all, all kinds of services from laptops to like, you can pretty much get everything off of a vendor that's on state contract. And in that case, what would be preferable is then yes, for us to have kind of like a one-page purchase order with the terms and agreements on the back with the mayor's stamp signature on the front. And that then satisfies the need for a, for the mayor's signature above $10,000. That's what I've seen in, in the past. I would sign the purchase order and it would have the mayor's stamp already on it because it's on the city of Brockton, you know, form. And then the terms and conditions are, are on it. And I think it's important to note too, that right now we do have purchase orders that I'm signing. And even though they may not be up to snuff with what the city is currently asking, a purchase order is a promise to pay. And the fact that I've signed as the authorized signatory means that we are promising to pay. And again, that was sort of what sufficed in the past. And, and I'm not arguing with the new process. It's just about, yes, how do we do it efficiently? And on, for those vendors that are already on state contract, there's a much simpler way for us to go about this.
Just to reiterate once more, there is nothing that is pending payment that was not budgeted for.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, I'll start with a simple question. Have you gotten sick yet? I would be sick if I had to put up with all of this. Now, I'm going to make it simple. Majority of the questions that we might have, we already know the answers to and we know what needs to be done. The folks that are in charge also know what needs to be done. Is the city or the folks on the city side aware of the repercussions that we might face if we continue to do this?
Yeah. I mean, we have tried our best to stress, not just myself, but my team members, the, the consultants. I know have regular phone calls with them. And, and I know that they did their due diligence last week in impressing upon them the ramifications of the transportation, which is why I think we've finally processed those, which I do very much appreciate. Whether they understand it or not, I don't know. I will say it has been expressed to them.
And then also when they, or as they continue to provide these new requirements, I feel like I already know the answer to this, but are they providing you with a feasible timeline of, can we get this done by this date and let's work on it this way?
No, but they have now asked for me to be able to provide them with a timeline in which I can do it. So now what, what we're doing right now is trying to, to plan out an implementation plan with a timeline provided. But to your point, as a leader, I've always learned that when you're giving, when you give out directives, you should be giving out support as well. And I will say that I, I feel the support has been lacking. And up until now, I, you know, I have been doing my very best to be diplomatic and to, you know, to, you know, I haven't wanted to throw anybody under, under the bus or anything like that. But I do feel like the relationship between myself and, and I came here to do a job. I thought I understood what the job was, but I do feel like it has been very adversarial. And I don't feel like it has always been in the spirit of working towards solutions. It may be collaborative, but it needs to work towards a solution. And I don't feel like we work towards reasonable solutions.
I'm tired of hearing the word collaborative and transparent, just to put it out there. I was going to touch on the state contract as well because I used to work for the VR on behalf of the city. And it does allow you to bypass a lot of the paperwork that you have to do. And it's just fascinating to me that they're still requiring all these documentations for them. But one thing that I'm just going to comment on is I've shared this before with the vice chair and other members. I feel like we meet over and over again, so many times throughout the week, throughout the month. Nothing gets done. Nothing. We, we pulling back and forth all day, every day. We're not actually holding hands and moving forward. And hearing you doing the presentation, I was just like, what can I say? What can I do? There is bills that need to be paid. The funds have been accounted for. The process has always been like this. It was never an issue. I don't recall watching it or seeing or hearing before that, you know, these people were not getting paid because there was something missing in their files or they're providing services, but contracts have not been finalized yet. Which again, we're headed dimensions understandable, you know, considering what we've gone through so recently. But it is illogical to come in and demand all these new requirements expecting it to take place overnight. School has started, kids are going to school, people are working, are providing this service to us. They need to get paid. I, I don't know how else you can put this. And I'm honestly tired of coming to all these meetings. We talked about all these things. We get reassurance from the mayor, from the CDCFO, all these people. Yes, we're going to work together, we're going to implement all these things. Bills are not getting paid. Should we ask them, do we? Should we ask them, do we want us to stop all the transportation, all the other services we're providing? And just wait until all the paperwork is done? You want the kids to stay home and wait until we implement all these new requirements? I, I'm lost for words. I'll rest my case, yeah.
Out of, go ahead.
One last question. Is there anything that we can do to assist you?
Superintendent, I just wanna, out of all transparency, I sit in, Ms. Azak can attest to this as the vice chair. You sit in a lot of meetings, there's a lot of stuff that comes before the vice chair, because you work closely with the, the chairman and the superintendent. A couple of months ago, we did attend a roundtable, school side officials and city side officials regarding this particular issue. And my position is very blunt. It's black and white. It's either we're paying these services, or you let me know that you are gonna hinder what the school department is, is focusing on and moving forward, so we don't interrupt services to our students. And in that meeting, it, it did get very testy. And I walked out of that meeting after I clearly asked, I need an answer, because I have to report to my colleagues on what our next steps are gonna be collectively, even if it is, we have to take legal action, which we don't want to do, because that's an embarrassment. But I think at this point, where a lot of roadblocks are being placed on the school department, this body has to take a, a strong stance to send a message that, you know, you don't fool around with education and services to one of the most vulnerable, you know, student population in the city. And when we, we had a, another meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it was the same outcome, when I was alluded to that vendors are not being paid. A lot of us have received those phone calls up until including the mayor's offices, people coming to the central and to the mayor's office asking why they are not being paid. And I asked the same question. I, I truly did, I asked the same question. Is there something, you know, if, I need to know, are you paying these vendors in the services? Or are you stopping this? Because I need to know as the vice chair and a member of this committee to bring that forward to the members, to see what steps we can do to make sure that doesn't, and that's up until including legal action. At this point, all gloves is off. The school department is tracking in the, in the right direction, but there's roadblocks that are being placed upon us, because certain things weren't being followed and they're trying to fix it. I did send a notification to the mayor to meet, because I felt that the progress of moving forward is very slow. There are more meetings than there is progress. It doesn't help on having meetings with the same discussion and nothing is being implemented or being done. And we all know the overreach is blaming the school department, when it's actually not. It's actually not. We've identified those issues and we're moving forward, but it's not something as superintendent indicated that can happen overnight. So this is what we're, what we're faced with and a lot of challenges. We were assured in good faith to hand over some contracts, so they could continue those, those payments. But I think it's just a stall tactic, just for the moment, and then it's gonna revert to it. Because as you've seen as the, the chairman, not to speak, he is not here, but he indicated that those payments are being made. And then they didn't and they stopped. It, it shouldn't have, have come to, to what we're dealing with right now. So this is what we're, we're dealing with. I, I do get frustrated at times in those meetings, because as elected officials, we are not the ones that are cutting the checks and looking at these invoices and signing them. And these are people that have full-time jobs. That, it's sad to say, you know, this didn't happen overnight. We identified where the, the lack is, but they weren't doing their jobs and they need to be held accountable. And none of them have been accountable until this moment. And I will speak it in public every single time, because a lot of people are throwing out the chapter 324 out there. And if you read that, and I made sure that all the members got that, there is only one individual that is responsible for the act of chapter 324, and that is the city CFO, Mr. Clarkson. So I will yield that, that if anybody has any follow-up questions, Mrs. Azak followed by Mrs. Oliver.
Thank you. So a couple of my colleagues already touched base on this. So these are services, not that I want to repeat myself, services that have already been provided and budgeted for. Grants that we were aware of. You know, we're gonna get sued. We're not, we didn't budget for lawsuits and we can't afford to get sued. And honestly, put the lawsuits aside, it's our students that are, that are losing out. Forget the lawsuits, our kids are, are missing out on this. So, you know, we're, many don't know this, and I, maybe I shouldn't even be saying it on camera, but something happened previously and, and the superintendent was just gonna take blame. And I said, you weren't even here to take blame. You're jumping feet first. She's trying to keep everything nice and calm and trying to just, you know, keep moving forward. But sometimes you have to be transparent like this, so people can understand the frustrations that are behind this. Even though you have a lot of our support, your hands are tied. You can only do so much until, again, you, you, you know, you get the support from the higher-ups. And we can get these, and, and again, we just don't want any lawsuits. And sometimes you might have to put people on notice with our attorneys to cover ourselves that we did put you on notice. This is my paralegal coming in. We put it in writing, we put you on notice, we're gonna get sued to cover ourselves. We, we, we're looking ahead. But it just, I appreciate you and I appreciate the transparency. So you know you always have my support, but we do, like many have said, we do want to work and move forward. But like two step forward, two steps forward, five steps back. It's, it's frustrating, very frustrating, because we really shouldn't be sitting here having a meeting because our vendors aren't getting paid. It's embarrassing. It's embarrassing, because people aren't gonna want to come and provide services to Brockton. You know, we, we hold our heads, I'm proud of Brockton, I'm proud of the City of Champions. And this is embarrassing, that our vendors can't pay their own employees. You know, the time of year is very tough. And moving forward, we know what the contracts, but we need to do what's right, and it was budgeted. So, but thank you. Thank you for your full transparency, Superintendent.
And, and because I asked about, you know, sort of our liability or our exposure here, the city solicitor and our, our attorney also agreed that, you know, kind of like TAS, right? It was sort of a vendor beware. They were providing the services before a contract was executed. So if we had never paid them, there was really, you know, nothing they could do. So I think one of the things that I've, I've heard is that, you know, while we do have some exposure here, because there are not executed contracts, you know, that, you know, that protects us in some way. However, I think the issue is that, to your point, but then, if they're like, okay, well then we will stop providing services, then, then where are we? So yeah, so that's my concern, because again, the students should be at the forefront of all of our decision-making.
Definitely, and, you know, just in my personal, when it comes to my work, I don't do anything without a contract. But there are times that it's a service I provide and it's a risk I'm gonna take. And, you know, I, I commend some of them, because they are putting our students first. And they've had wonderful relationships with Brockton, and they know, in the long run, we will end up paying them. It's just, it's frustrating to have them go through what they're going through, to have them approach us, call us. You know, this is stressful. So I, I, and I do, it just, again, it's a good faith. In good faith, they, they provided the services, and I'm glad they did, because otherwise our students, if our students are not getting to back and forth to the schools, then it puts a burden on the parents who can't go to work, because they don't have someone to watch the children. It's, it's, it's a trickle effect. So again, we need to work through this, and we're trying. So we, we definitely need to, hopefully they'll work with us after this. Thank you.
Any vendors has given us a deadline of if they don't get paid, they will stop all service working with us?
I will say that there are already some that have put a hold on our, have already stopped. So I, I don't know specifically if there are any that are like, I'm not unless I'm paid by. But I do know that we have holds on our accounts for things such as copier maintenance and copier supplies. So in the case that any of our school buildings need more toner, or a copier breaks down, that account has been put on hold. And of course, that is going to impact our educators, and I'm sure I will hear from them when, when that occurs. But yeah, that's, so, so things like that are sort of trickling in where it's like they, they, I, I don't get the, the threat of a deadline as much as a, yeah, we're done now.
Okay.
And I, that's what I worry about.
So for the 75 students that requires out of district tuitions, right? That's already, the money's already had to get paid, right? What is the balance? Do you have it again, so the?
1.4 million needs to be paid out.
So if that doesn't get paid, 75 of our students would have to stay home, right? Because those are most vulnerable, at-risk students. That goes out of district schools, right? And 75 of them might not be able to go to school where they're going at, if we don't pay our bill.
Correct, and for that one in particular, and I, I'm waiting for a response from the city on this. But my understanding is those contracts were actually already submitted to the city. And the issue was that they have not been signed by the mayor. Now, I reached out to clarify, okay, were the contracts that were sent for all of our special education tuition, were the contracts the, the Brockton approved, like, or, or were they, you know, or are they at least sufficient and acceptable? Because we do have agreements with our outside placements every year that are updated yearly with the tuition cost and all of that, that we do have to sign off on. So I believe those have been provided. All I know is that contracts have been provided and they're waiting for a signature. But what I worry about, and so I asked, is are these contracts sufficient? Or are we going to also need the Brockton specific contracts? Just please let us know so that we can work towards compliance. So these are the kind of things that, you know, where I'm still trying to figure out, still trying to get information on. I will say that our entire team was working through the weekend with, on this presentation, on these emails, sending, like trying to get the information that we need in order to even be able to present to you where the true data is. And so we're doing our best to try to collect it and just waiting on some information.
So when was those contracts sent?
That I, I don't know.
Has it been over a month or two? Like a estimate time you sent it out? And when was the last responsive, like emails that you got back and forth from the city? When the possibility of them getting paid?
Well, I didn't know that they hadn't been paid until?
Wednesday.
Yeah.
Till last Wednesday?
So, so this all occurred between Thursday and today, these conversations of finding out that there were actually contracts that were sent over. They're just waiting for the mayor's signature, but then my question was, because I'm just anticipating, I, I just hope it's the right contract, or that at least whatever is provided is sufficient. Because I will say that the city solicitor has been working with, you know, our team to try and help us prioritize and manage, because it is, it is way too much to accomplish. So she has been giving us some concessions here and there, or like, okay, instead of just a, instead of a contract for this one, we'll just do a letter of agreement. So I will say that the city solicitor is doing her best to work with us. But it's like on one-offs, like we don't have an implementation plan that says, here, we're, this is acceptable for these, we'll work on these next. It's not like a tiered-out plan, it's just like, we're just trying to, like, we're scrambling, like, okay, what about these ones? We need this now, they stopped payment, what should we do? You know, it's, it's based on those scenarios and how emergent they are, that the city solicitor is providing us, you know, the needed support.
I think just by listening to you and your presentation, I think you're taking all the steps and you're trying to work with the process, the check and balance they are requesting from you. But it can't be done without us paying our bills, right? So I think at this moment, it's on their side of the court. And they basically have to do their job and get this, all these bills paid. And then you can move forward to make sure all the processes and all those check and balances are in place, but we gotta pay our bills. My only last statement for tonight is, I think every parent that has a child in IEP in 504, should pick up their phone or an email, the mayor and every city council is tomorrow, and to knock this off. The bills gotta pay, and your child deserves an education, because this will stop. There will be no bus to take your child to out-of-district schools, there'll be no bus to take your child to local schools. And soon or later, there'll be no light in our schools. There'll be no books, no supplies, nothing for us to even give a proper education to our students. So this gotta stop today. Thank you.
Before we move on, I just want to acknowledge that we do have our director of compliance and strategy, Ms. Sai, in the audience, and also our chief procurement officer, Rich here as well, if anybody has any questions for them. I don't know if, if anybody has any questions relative to what we're dealing with? If you want to understand the process of what procurement is and where the struggles are with, with compliance? But I will follow, Mr. Gomez, if you have a floor.
I just have another question that just came between the conversation right now. How did you find out Wednesday about the non-payment? Or was it someone else that learned that they had not been paid?
Well, there were a couple of things. Mr. Silva was at our office, I got some emails. So, yeah, so it was, it was a couple of different communications all at once, that all of a sudden I was like, wait, this one and this one and this one? So at first I thought, oh, maybe it was a one-off or a two-off here and there.
So to be clear, the city did not notify you? We are not going to, or we have not paid these invoices?
Correct. Now, the city auditor had been sending back invoices and saying, I'm not going to pay these if you have not done X, Y, and Z. However, so where there were ones that we did know that they weren't paying, as we were trying to get contracts for them, and that stack was on, you know, my desk, as we're trying to get contracts for them, or then got transitioned over to Ms. Sai and Mr. Calderon's desks. However, it was not until last week that it came to our attention that there were many that had not been sent back. So basically everything, that things had not been paid. Because I was thinking it was just, okay, these ones were the ones they wanted us to work on first. This is the stack that where we need to work through the contracts. But it turns out that it was pretty much everything.
So besides the ones that you guys were notified, hey, I need these information, everything else that was submitted for payment just sat there, you were not notified, and they were not paid?
Correct.
Great communication. That, that's what you call collaboration. Like, so much for collaboration, so much for communicating. You're in charge of paying these bills and, you know, you send them over to me, I'mma just sit on it until you find out, you know, miraculously, luckily someone showed up to your office that they have not been paid. Like, it, it's just fascinating.
Mr. Vega?
I'll go back to something that's kind of seems minor, and then, you know, but you mentioned that one of our copier support groups have said, we're, we're done. For anybody who's worked at a school before, I'm director of technology, I can tell you confidently, the internet could go down in the middle of the school day, and teachers would be just fine. But God help you if the copiers don't work. And I, Manny, I know it sounds funny, but it will bring things to a grinding hall. When I say it will bring things, there will be things that our kids can't do. There will be things that our teachers won't be able to teach. You know, and, and so that's one small area, right? It's not so small when you really think about it. A teacher would say out loud, it's not a small thing when the copiers don't work. But, but you can see how a series of small things, no longer being paid, lead to a huge problem. In, in that vein, right? You mentioned the 10K, anything over 10K, having a very particular purchase process. How many $10,000 purchases or orders does a school system of our? How many $10,000 purchases or orders does a school system of our size make in a month?
Oh, in a month? Well, over the course of a year, it's 1,300. So, I would say over the course of a 12 months, like 100. I mean, it doesn't end up being like that, right? There's a lot more at the start of the school year. So, but it's over, I think it was like 1,330, something over the course of the year.
Is that, has that been something you've, has that figure been the cutoff figure at other, in others, districts that you've been in?
Sorry, say that.
Sorry, that $10,000 mark, is it unique to Brockton? Or is it commonplace that 10,000 is a trigger for?
Well, for 10,000, you do have to get three quotes. There are procurement processes that you have to follow. The contract and appendices that we are asked to do here is specific to here. The purchase order that I showed was what we used in my last district too, where it had the mayor's signature on it, I signed it, and then the terms of the agreement were on the back. Now, that was often used even for stuff that was not on state contract. What we've asked for here is at least just the stuff that's on state contract that will go through the much more rigorous contract and appendices for those things that are not on state contract, just for good measure. But, what we've asked is at least can we do that one-pager for things that are on state contract? And that's what we're waiting on. But, until then, to have to do it for everything is quite cumbersome.
My last question is, who's present at the city school finance meetings?
So, it is myself, the city CFO, the city solicitor, the mayor, and our consultant.
The city?
So, five people always. Now, from time to time, we'll have different people come in depending on the nature of the meeting. And we also have other meetings that are like transportation roundtable meetings. Those ones include the city council president, the vice chair. So, but those are a separate meeting. We have at least one meeting a week that includes those five people. And then, additional people will participate based on, for example, the most recent one being Schedule 19. So, then, one of our budget analysts and our school CFO join that one. So, it depends on what we're gonna be, what's on the agenda.
But, at the core, if I'm hearing you correctly, it's the superintendent, the mayor, the city CFO, the city solicitor, and you said there's a fifth?
And our open architect's consultant.
Oh, and our open architect, okay. So, I guess, you know, if folks, aside from reaching out to their city councilors, you might want to begin speaking to the office of the mayor, the office of the city solicitor, the office of the city CFO, and begin figuring out, like, you know, what it is that is holding up the process. And I'm not trying to put anyone under the microscope. But, the city of Brockton is under a huge amount of scrutiny. And this is not a good look, right? And so, I, you know, I really, I know we're saying that, you know, collabora, I still believe that collaboration is very much possible. I still believe that, that we have a great many colleagues on the city council and other city offices that want to do right by vendors and by the city of Brockton. I think it's gonna be imperative that they get more active and they get more involved. And for those at home who are looking to talk to somebody, it might be the mayor, the CFO, the city solicitor. Because the super gets a lot of calls already.
Thank you. Well, yes, I mean, those meetings that I attend, I wish all of my colleagues can attend them and they can feel the frustration moving forward. But, it's, you know, you know, the overreach is in abundance. I know some of us here, we respond, we don't attack. But, you know, when it's, you know, a lot of the notion is, you know, the city bailed out the school district. But, I can say that my, just my words, this isn't on behalf of the committee, is that the city didn't bail out the school department. The school department is the one that's been bailing out the city for years. And that's clear as day and that's in black and white. They can attest to it as much as they, they want. I mean, last week's meeting, I could say the school department bailed out the city. We did. Because if the school department didn't agree to that carryover, the city wouldn't be able to set their tax rates this evening. They wouldn't be able to certify their free cash. Therefore, they couldn't set the tax rate. Therefore, they can't pay their bills. Therefore, they go bankrupt. Therefore, the governor will be sending in a control board to take over the city. That's how much power and autonomy that this body has. Because if one of us took that vote not to approve that, it wouldn't be happening this evening. And I know that after this meeting, some counselors will go and watch. And then, we know who the individuals are, not to point any fingers, that they're gonna make their nice social media post for their, a little bit of their networking group. But, at the same token, it's, you know, we have to work together to fix this. It's been identified, let's fix it, but let's not interrupt our services to our students. I just have one request. If our chief procurement person could just, if you mind taking the podium, just to just walk through so the members can know and the public can know, what does a procurement process look like? What does the state combines look like and how contracts are actually implemented? Even though the superintendent gave us a little bit of the presentation earlier. Thank you.
Sure. So, thank you for having me. My name is Richard Calderon. I'm the new budget and procurement officer for the school district. So, the way the procurement process works, there's different variables. As Dr. Lee has said, you have anything that's under 10,000, which is sound business practice that anyone can procure services from a specific vendor as long as they can provide the service and the specifications that is required. Anything for a school district from 10,000 to 100,000, you can solicit quotes. Before that, it used to be anything between 10,000 to 50,000. Anything over 100,000, you have to go out to bid. As far as the state contracts are concerned, the reason why there's state contracts is they created the agency operational services division, which is called the OSD. They've kind of gone out and it's almost like the strategy has been kind of like to buy in bulk, right? To say to vendors, "Hey, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is, you'll be able to, you know, to have this pool of agencies buy from you to reduce that across." So, what does that mean for a municipal body, whether it's a city or a school? It removes the bidding process because the OSD takes care of all the bidding, you know, advertisement, awarding a contract to the lowest responsive, responsible bidders. So, when they, when you, when a city or a school, you know, references a state contract, all the legality has been done already through the contract. The thing that they do say is, when you, when you buy off of the state contract, you must reference in your purchase order that contract number. That's what makes it that validation of the guy that's saying that we're buying off of the state contract. So, it's, I mean, it's a pretty transparent process. It's not complex. So, it's, there shouldn't be that much difficulty. I know under the leadership of the superintendent, and I know the finance team, we're definitely working very hard with the city. Where, you know, all the services that have been rendered, it's just, you know, the process has been before, you know, before she arrived, before I arrived. So, there's, there's really just two components to this. I mean, and they are, it's the services that are rendered, vendors must be paid. And the other component is that we're, you know, we're working very hard to make sure that we're following our procurement laws and statutes. There's nothing that we can do going forward because the services have been rendered. You can't, and, you know, I can't go out and do a procurement. That's kicking the can down the road. The services have been rendered. It's almost like a cover-up, right? So, it's just, you know, decision has to be made. You know, as I stressed before, you know, once these vendors stop providing these services, who's gonna go on the 5 o'clock news and say, "Hey, we no longer can provide these services for the children?" So, a decision has to be made and it has to be made very quickly. I get a lot of calls every day. I'm in a daze of calls every day. I've been here, this is my 10th day here. And it's, you know, I wasn't sure what I was coming into. But, in the short amount of time that I've been here, I can attest of what, you know, the financing has done through the leadership of the superintendent. And we reckon, we're working very, very hard to make sure that we're complying with everything that the city is requesting. It's just, I feel like a lot of things is kind of like a case-by-case services. But, when you have over 300 contracts, you know, it's, it kind of bogs down the process. And this is why, the reason I say that, you know, decisions have to be made. They're very tough decisions. I'm not the decision-maker, but I can just point out the simple fact, there's just two components to what I just said. So, that's...
Thank you. On the, just to touch base back again on the state combines, even though they've already been vetted out by the state, you know, all the legality from that. I know on the city side, the mayor's signature is because of city charter and so forth. Is that something that, you know, I agree of like tightening the belt and making sure, you know, if it's only one signature, like, let's make sure we get two to make sure that this is, you know, accurate and we're not, you know, double paying? But, how does that, where is the difference between actually putting it out to bid and going on the state combine?
So, so I think there's some confusion on the city side. And I'm not looking to point any fingers or throw anyone under the bus. So, the reason you referenced a state contract is because the procurement process has been done. So, what does that mean for the school district or for the city? That, you know, we can turn around a procurement right away because all that, all that procurement has been done? Because, as an example, when you go out to bid, you have to do, you know, a two-weeks advertisement. Then, you have to, the bids have to come in. Then, you have to look at every bid, evaluate, make sure, you know, that they submit all the statutory, statutory forms. Can, are they gonna meet all the scope of work? There's like a due process that can take, you know, a month or over a month. And that's an invitation for bid for a lowest responsive, responsible bidder. When it's an RFP, a request for proposals, then you have to form an evaluation committee. Now, once you get all the, the RFP solicitations come in, once, you know, you have to now set the committee up. Then, the committee has to evaluate. And then, the chief procurement officer will then have to evaluate the recommendations from that evaluation committee and make a determination. What I've seen is that, so we have to go through this process. If we went through that process, then we have to submit all this documentation to the city and then it kind of restarts the clock again. So, we're doing the same thing twice. So, instead of an average procurement, let's say, if we went out to bid, it would take, let's say, about a month or a month and a half. Now, it's gonna be two months to three months. So, you know, it boils down to time management. Because as an example, like, if we, if the school district had a project, let's say for like boilers or a roof replacement, those normally are done when the kids are not in school. If the turnaround time is gonna be, you know, increased because they have to make sure that the procurement laws are being followed and to kind of recheck what we've done, even though now there's a body in place. Now, the school district has a procurement officer that's doing that process. You know, I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to meet those deadlines for those projects. And, and, you know, if we're going through the MSBA where, you know, they provide city where, I mean, the school with a percentage to cover the cost, if we don't meet that timeline, we're gonna lose that money. And, you know, the city's gonna be on a hook to pay that 100%. So, that's the difference between those two.
All right, thank you. Appreciate any questions from any of the members relative to that. Thank you very much. I just wanted, you know, I know we've, we've already talked that it's more of, you know, the public to understand what the process is for some of those members that, that don't know, you know, how procurement is, you know, dirty D, like, it's, I feel like I'm almost the procurement officer myself. But, thank you very much. And welcome, Mrs. Azak has a question.
Thank you.
How are you doing, Mrs. Azak?
Nice to meet you. So, actually, vice chair, I'm not sure who cheers the accounts review committee, but maybe it's time we have an accounts review because we haven't had one in almost two years. So, it would be nice for us to get together and start doing the accounts review again now that we have a procurement officer. But, if we can, I know we're discussing finance, but that's definitely time for us to get one of those scheduled.
Yep, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
That's a committee of the whole now, so the vice chair chairs that, so. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Calderon.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All righty. Do we have any more follow-up questions relative to our agenda items today for the superintendent? If not, anything in closing, Mrs. Azak?
So, superintendent, so some of the vendors are getting paid tomorrow. Do they have any anticipated dates to what's gonna happen with the other vendors? Because I'm sure those are wondering whoever's watching right now if they haven't been paid. So, no clue, they haven't given you any timeframe?
No.
What can we as a committee do to request a timeframe? Because, again, it was funds that are budgeted.
Yes. I mean, request that they pay our outstanding bills. I would send a direct request to the city to please pay our bills.
Should we as a committee request that in writing?
No, I mean, the superintendent, as, I mean, the directive is already, there's no votes this evening. But, that directive will come from the superintendent. But, we could also take that up at our next regular meeting where we can actually take that up on the floor and vote that in for a directive from the committee.
Because, I mean, we are going into December. We have a lot, we have a lot of vendors that are looking to, right now's a really tough time of year. And they're just looking to get, again, these are contracts that we're in with them. So, they just wanna, just so we can give them an idea, because I'm sure after this, you're gonna get more calls. But, just so we can give them some kind of a timeframe. So, from now till at least next Tuesday, we're gonna do our best to try to have an update. If not, at least get a timeframe as to when they can be expected.
Absolutely. So, I do plan on providing another update on Tuesday. This is what we could kind of, the presentation even, that we could get together today. But, we actually had some additional slides where it was like, "Here's the process before for this one. Here's the process now," just to kind of even walk through how things have changed and how we're trying to keep up. So, I did want to be able to provide additional context. But, I am hoping at that meeting that I'll also be able to provide an update, not only on the payments that are supposed to be released tomorrow, because I do want to make sure everybody gets an update on that, but on the timeline for all the other payments to be released, as well as a plan for how we are going to pay our bills in a consistent and regular fashion while also meeting our compliance, you know, requirements. Because we do want to do both of those things. We, we do want to meet these requirements. We're trying our best to do so. But, our operations have to continue. Business has to happen as usual. And so, the first request is to pay our outstanding bills. But, there does need to be a system in place where, or an agreement made that our bills will continue to be paid. We can't do this every few weeks.
No, we can't. It's not professional to do that. So, okay, and I take it these bill, the payments are gonna be mailed out to them? Or will they have the option to pick them up themselves?
I feel like you can get an answer from the audience.
So, if they have an option, just for those vendors that have been waiting?
Yes.
Especially with the, you know, short week, this weekend, it's a holiday week. And we are getting into December on Monday. So, thank you, thank you again.
Thank you.
Ms. Oliver followed by Mr. Gomes.
When is the next meeting with Desi? Or have they responded back from your letter or email that you have sent to them?
I know that they reached out to our consultant. They do have a relationship with our consultant stating that they had, they are in receipt of the first memo and were going to be reaching out. I only sent the second memo today, so I imagine they haven't... They probably read it, but I haven't gotten, I haven't gotten a confirmation of receipt yet. Our next, our next meeting is on December 5th.
Which is next week, I guess. I think my, if people just wants to just check, I think there's a few neighboring state. I'm not sure if it's Pennsylvania or New York. There's an act of lawsuits regarding service not being rendered to the sped, IEP in 504. So, definitely check that out because there's a lawsuit happening right now, I think, in New York. And also, one coming up in Pennsylvania. I keep track of a lot of it when it has to do with the sped department. So, I think it's something you want to see how much it's gonna cost those state. Because we do not want those in our home right now, especially in our city. And also, the collection agency. They can put us in collection agency. That's gonna be more bills that we have to pay at the end. But, just look at those lawsuits that's coming around the states surrounding us. Because there's a big lawsuits coming for all the parents that got together because of service not being rendered. And it's something that we're trying to prevent. And I think the school department is trying to prevent. But, there's other people that's hindering her process. And that's it for me tonight. And that's it for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gomes?
What would be the next step? Besides the lawsuit, I know it, there's a lot of excitement around lawsuits. If these bills, let's say, for instance, the deadline is the end of this month, what's the next step? Because look at me today, I wasn't ready for this meeting. I had other commitments. I don't wanna come here for us to have this conversation all over again, and nothing is getting done. And also, I, I like to wear a suit when I come to these meetings. But what is the next step? Let's say these bills don't get paid. I know there would be a lot of repercussions on the other end, you know, services will come to a full stop and all these things. What would you say, let's say, is your action plan?
I mean, our team can only control, we can control, and unfortunately, we don't release payments. So, what we will continue to do is try to execute the contracts as quickly as we can, prioritizing those that have stopped payment, those that are for large orders. We have all of our different members of the district leadership team who are actually going through all of the unpaid POs to sort of triage and see which ones need to be handled first. And so, we just will keep chugging along, trying to do it, trying to keep things moving forward. That's the best we as a school department can do. Sorry, I know that's not a great answer.
What do you need us to do?
I would, I would say yes to, to any support you can provide in, you know, working, helping us work or collaborate better with the city in order to get payments made. Maybe getting the support of city councilors. Yeah, I, I, I've never been in a situation quite like this, so it's hard for me to even know what, what to do next.
I like just to jump in, I like to say is, you know, take a step back and observe everything that's going on. You don't wanna just, right, jump into, why is this actually happening? And I always invite some of you to watch those account, meet, those accounts meetings on the city side. As to some of the questions and the remarks that some of the remarks that some of, you know, I don't wanna call them colleagues on the other side, the elected officials, that they say in public. When we talk about what support that comes from this body, there are people that do this full-time. We don't do that as elected officials. You know, we can reach out to, you know, to councilors, to the mayor's office. Understand this when it's, when I talk about reaching out to the mayor's office, he's the chairman of the school committee. So, he's well aware of everything that's going on, and he's in those spaces, and he's in those meetings. And I will say it very bluntly, and I've said it back when I got on this committee, I have a huge problem with any mayor being the chairman of the, of any school committee in the Commonwealth, for that matter. And, and it's very sad that our chairman isn't the person with that strong voice, because he is also the mayor. We didn't have to have some of these meetings, because, and a directive could have just came from him. And that's all it needed to be. Keep paying these invoices, we will work this through, we will execute these contracts. How long is it gonna be? Here's a timeline, let's keep moving forward. Just to, you know, an example, when I talk to a few of the vendors, and even talking to transportation, it's, perfect example, you have a vendor that's, you know, picking up 15 students. They're not getting paid. They stop. Now, it's up to transportation to make sure they have transportation for those 15 other students. All of the vendors know that these vendors are not getting paid. They're not gonna render those services, because why should I go render those services if they're not getting paid? That is up into including when we are short drivers on transportation side. Our vendors are the ones that are providing transportation to our students. So, if they're not getting paid, our students, they're gonna stop, our students are not gonna get to school for just a simple process that, that's blowing up because people are not happy on the city side. And, and it's not about fixing it, it's because they didn't get what they wanted, so let's make it difficult on the, on the, on the school side. That's where we are right now. So, you know, this meeting was basically to, for the public to know, we're not here pointing the finger, we're just here saying, this is what's going on, and this is the process. There needs to be, as my colleague, Mr. Vega, there needs, this overreach needs to stop. We all know it, it's not just a school issue, it's a whole city issue, and we have to fix it. So, that's my piece on that. If nobody else has any further questions, going once, twice, we, any new business? Anybody have any new business? Seeing none, there's no other business as well. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion was properly made by Mr. Vega, seconded by Mr. Oliver, Mrs. Oliver, excuse me, sorry. Show of hands. Unanimous.